Welcome, everybody, to the committee chairs meeting of the Greenfield City Council. It's 6:03 and I'm calling this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded by committee chairs. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Yes, so we have our esteemed colleague Anthony from The Recorder. And as a reminder, the purpose of this meeting is to prepare agendas for subcommittees for council conservation. No discussion or comments will be entertained unless requested upon by the committee chairs. So we know that and we will call. And do we have anybody remote right now?
No, you do not.
Okay, so we can actually just
Wait. Yep, no.
Talk to people in the room. Thank you.
Counselor Wondolowski.
Present. Counselor Garrett.
I am here.
Counselor Healy is not here today. It's absent. Counselor Gola.
Here.
Counselor Bodman.
Here.
You have a plan.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
And Counselor Healy's talk passed away, so.
He loves his thoughts, you know?
Yeah. I know I've met with these ones. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sure he's taking it hard.
Well, he also has to console the children.
Yeah.
Yeah. Never easy. So the president's note part is the shortest I've ever seen it. I don't know what happened. They all went to other places, so.
Yeah. There hasn't been a lot submitted this month.
So, because, uh.
Anyways.
Yeah. Okay. So, continued discussion of inviting department heads to present to the council on a monthly basis. I'm looking back to my notes to see what we had decided we wanted to.
So for this month, you had asked that the assessor be invited.
Yes.
But the former assessor's last day was Friday.
Okay.
There's a brand new assessor today. Who
I think that's not fair.
Probably, yeah, wouldn't have.
Yeah, can we bump that to October?
We can.
Thank you.
Um, we removed it from this September 17th agenda because we made an assumption.
Yeah.
And I don't know.
You made the right call.
So. Invite assessor for October.
Correct.
Again, I don't know, being a month in the seat, what they'll have to offer.
Okay. I think it's helpful, though, because as you start looking at tax rates and things for.
Right.
Okay.
So.
Ways and Means.
Yes, maybe I should reach out and find out how to approach that.
I wonder if alternatively maybe one of the elected folks for my comment, if he's not feeling up to something.
Again, yep. Or his designate, you could say.
I'd say he, it's a he, right? The new assessor is not a he.
Okay.
Um, thank you. Although I'm unsure of their preference. Um, they're not a he, so.
Okay, cool.
Um. I'll reach out to that. To make it to the assessor or.
Them or the mayor or the finance director or.
Yes, exactly, just to find out when we might be able to have a tax rate discussion.
Okay, well, that that has to happen.
Right.
You know.
Usually in November.
Yeah.
Yeah. November at the latest.
Yeah.
October, if there's a perfect world, but we don't often live in a perfect world.
Right.
Yeah.
And there's just finding out when they'll have information ready.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm looking at my notes and I know we we also had on our, like, list of others that we might be interested in libraries. We just had G set.
So just to keep in mind on September 17th, Senator Commerford.
Oh.
Is going to be
picking up all.
A few days, so if anybody has any cues.
Oh, sure.
Send them to us. Um, it's just gonna, from my understanding.
Okay.
Going to be a brief, like, update type of thing. And when we get to that on the September agenda, I will have another question for you.
Okay, that sounds fine. Um, does anybody feel compelled? I have also had a back and forth with Hannah from the GBA because there have just been a lot of questions kind of in the public about empty storefronts. And I thought it would be great to get a conversation about what the business community is talking about. And I don't know her availability.
If if you send us, and I know you have, that's why I'm asking, a perspective list of who you would like invited when.
Okay.
We could possibly find out, but maybe for September, we just stick with the senator. Is that acceptable?
That is acceptable, okay. It's like, just take the circle. Okay. So moving on to the Economic Development Committee with Derek not being here. But it looks like the things that were on the joint public hearing are amending the zoning ordinance for the Animal Kennel Hospital, which we've talked about a little bit here. Um, and then the amending of the Central Commercial District, which is coming back for a second look after some redefining.
Is that proposed? Are both those going to go on city council for votes this month?
Could be my assumption.
That's what I was thinking. I just wasn't sure.
It's possible, although I'm not entirely sure of the timeline when. So the planning board has 21 days to forward a recommendation. I don't know where that 21st day lands. If it's before or after the council, before or after the five-day rule, you know, that sort of thing.
Figure it out.
Um.
If it is achievable, I it would be great to have both of them come to council.
Let me see if.
In the past.
Oh, so they are on the draft agenda.
Oh, okay.
So Tammy must have already looked.
They'll make a, they usually will make a recommendation in the joint here, just to clear recently at least.
Yeah, okay. All right, so now we go to A and O and preference world.
Yep, so we'll have appointments. So there's, I'll say that there's several things here that are not ready to be on our agenda and several things that are.
So that's why they're there, so we can find out.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and then several things that I'm also curious. I don't know if we're ready, they're new to me. Um, so appointments, yep, we'll do that. And no, we are not ready for the adoption of the NGL.
So remove it completely?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Um, and then I wanted to ask you, these next two pieces.
I've been playing a phone tag with Eric, but I can, I'm sure, get ahold of him.
Okay.
For our meeting, which is, say, as I, and I'm on September 10th, it's next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I can talk before that.
Okay, so you'll be ready to update us?
Yep.
Okay.
So, yeah, no, it's, he knows that I want to talk about it. Like, it's been probably four voicemails back and forth.
Great, yeah, that's, thank you for doing that.
Um, the two tabled items.
Yeah.
That one we're not.
Yeah, the planning, so the chapter, the the take from the table 26008 and 26010. Um, so those will be ready for discussion? Or will there be something for us to, do you think, like, on the agenda for us to look at promotions or, like, what?
I think we should put it on the agenda for motions. And if my conversation with Eric indicates that we should hold off, we can hold off.
Okay.
Because I suspect it's going to be fairly simple. We mostly just needed his feedback on kind of the rationale behind them.
Okay.
And so.
Okay, that's fair. And will they, will the clerk's office be ready to put it on the agenda with you?
Oh, it will be too, because it needs a public hearing, right?
Well, yeah, I believe, I believe so, so.
We might have to wait till October.
Yeah.
So. Um, 2608 and 2610.
Yeah.
Were these when you ran the meeting and you held the public hearings?
Yeah, and we tabled it because we didn't have enough information.
Were the public hearings held?
Yes.
Okay, so as long as there are no substantive changes, then they can be forwarded to council. But it depends on what.
Is for being forwarded?
Right, so. And again, zoning is usually pretty strict, in particular in their language. So there might not be much wiggle room. So if the public hearing was held, then it can be voted on in council.
Okay. All right.
Because the public hearing should be like the final step before it goes to council.
Okay. Agreed. Okay, got it. Well, when you said that, that last piece of the hearing should be the final step before it goes to council. So then, like, do you, are you advocating for us having a discussion about things? And then at the next meeting, having a hearing? Or is it okay if we're bringing forward a bunch of things to have the hearing at the first time we discuss it? Do you, do I need to say that again? Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, who are you talking to?
You.
Okay, yes, you need to say it again.
So the timing of a public hearing. Is it important that the public hearing happens when the committee feels ready to bring it forward to the full council? Or should we have the public hearing at the beginning of a discussion so that we can elicit public comment about the thing? And then discuss it? Or are either there's pros and cons of both and we can do a public hearing whenever we want, as long as we have one?
Got it. In order, this may or may not answer your question. In order not to have to pay for a second public hearing.
Yeah.
The committee should be like, okay, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Before you elicit public comment. In my opinion, because the public comment sometimes, as counselors, we know that that's a great idea. Can't be done here. You know, the language can't be. This is not the place for that language, right? It's not under our jurisdiction. So if the committee gets relatively set on what they think they'd like to see passed.
Yeah.
Then you schedule a public hearing.
Yeah.
Hold the public hearing and forward the recommendation on to the council after the public hearing is held.
Okay, so I'm going to say that again, what I think you're saying. So you're saying that if there's a public hearing on a thing, the public hearing, for the public hearing to count, it needs to be on the thing, basically, that we're forwarding to the full council.
Right, right.
If we change it significantly in discussion, we would need.
You would have to hold on other public hearings.
And given that I always do public comment, people do have an opportunity to speak up early in the process. Okay, got it. Okay, so we're ready, we did a public hearing and those are ready to put those on under motions. If more discussion is needed, we'll just, we'll just discuss it and then people. Okay, great. So then, this, and I apologize to everyone. There may be thing, this week has been particularly crazy with back to school and getting back in to work after vacations and everything. So I am behind on email in a way I've not been in three years. So I, there may be things in my inbox that I have not seen. I am not, I have, don't believe that I've seen the next two pieces, the zero emission first vehicle policy and cannabis social equity. Have those been sent to me?
Yes.
Yes.
They have been sent.
They are all live?
In July.
Mm-hmm, so.
Yeah, the cannabis social equity thing is a legal.
Yeah.
I think I have a typo in the vehicle policy one, but I can fix.
Okay, so those were sent in because I was not sending them in July. It's really been a while.
I went to a whole council.
Yeah.
Okay, I believe, I believe you all. All right, good. Okay, so I have those, so I, so.
I don't know about the can, and the cannabis.
I haven't.
It's gone out to everybody.
Okay, great. So that means that, really me asking about this, is that, given that these are new policies, I just want to make sure that all of the counselors have time to read them, not just, like, getting the packet on. So we have them all. Okay, perfect. So then let's put those under discussion. Um, the vacancies in appointed offices, we'll put that under discussion. Um, the Crossroads Cultural District Committee will put those under discussion. The hybrids meeting, under discussion. Um, the farming, under discussion, wetlands protection, under discussion, human rights commission, under discussion. Um, ways and means, under discussion. And then these next, these next pieces, the rules of procedure. Um, can you, so that, can you update me on that? I know that Counselor Brown was going to talk to the two of you. Have, are you all on the same page?
Yes, we had a conversation. It has to do with being the consent agenda. So I haven't seen the most recent because Sarah was gonna look at kind of hybridizing between two other municipalities to put something that's more similar to Greenfields.
So Sarah has submitted.
Okay.
Um. Tammy was also taking a look at the rules of procedure.
Okay.
For things that maybe the rules of procedure says, but we don't do it technically that way. So I'm sure an updated version will be sent out, but it's not quite, like, I proposed amendments and, sorry. I proposed amendments and it was sent out to A and O and put in the Google Sheet thing. Um, Tammy sent them out and then Sarah sent one and then we were looking at it again, so. We're, we're trying to make it inclusive of all of the suggestions.
Okay.
Um. So that probably should be discussion.
Okay, I would like that to actually be personally held off until next.
Okay, removed.
Yes, because I want to look through the rules of procedure and make a, there's.
You've got a lot.
Yeah, I, that, that I want to hold off on. And I also want to hold off on, um, the next, so these pieces, I'm assuming these came through from the rec department, correct? The next pieces, is that why they're on?
Alcohol?
Yeah.
I'm not sure where that one came from.
Curfew, Public Lands, Smoking, Recreation Commission and Parks and Recreation, those aren't ready to go forward. But is that, is that where those came from?
Curfew, Public Lands and smoking, I believe you're correct that it came from recreation. Do you want them removed?
I want them temporarily, we, they are on my list. I know that they need to come forward soon, but these are not ready. Um, from between, at least between curfew and parks and parks and recreation. But the alcoholic beverages, that piece, was that also something from Christine Moore?
I, off the top of my head, I'm not.
Okay.
Great. She said, um. So we're removed.
For October, you want to have a comeback in October?
Probably, but I, I'm, I'm not sure that we will be ready then.
Are we just saying remove temporarily?
You remove them temporarily, I am there, I'm.
Until we hear from you?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And then animals, I know that that's something that you and Counselor Gordon were working on. Did you ask for that to come forward?
I did not, no, I definitely.
So that is, I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, the animal ordinance based on Ollie's Law.
Yeah.
For kennels, which Ollie's Law, right. We are finding out, they keep tweaking.
Good, good.
But they don't tell us.
Okay.
So, yeah, is that about right?
Say that is very accurate.
Okay.
So remove temporarily?
That temporarily as well.
It's not ready from the state, though.
Right. Well, they're, they're supposedly going to be changing it again, more.
So, just so I'm clear, it's Ollie's Law, which implies it's passed. Is it really just a bill that's about?
Nope, it's passed.
It's passed, but they're going to amend it in the.
Yes, well, and they knew when they regulate, where they do regulations. Right. When they, when they passed it last year, they knew they were going to amend it.
Yeah.
But they wanted to get it on the books.
I understand.
Which is terribly confusing sometimes.
Deeply, yeah, for us, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, yes, we'll keep the review, city code part three. Thank you for doing that.
And that's discussion?
Yeah, it's discussion. It's a list of chapters so we can go through and look at whatever.
Okay.
Well.
Can I go back and ask a question?
Absolutely.
The alcoholic beverage, check number 209. I'm not remembering much about what was the amendment or where it came from. Do you cue?
I never.
Yeah.
Any information on that one?
Do you want to put it on your discussion or remove temporarily?
Remove temporarily. And also, if you could, because I'm not sure where that's coming from. I know where the other pieces are coming from. Could, could you send me something on, like?
We can do our best.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Yep, that's that's our agenda. So there will be potentially quite a bit, these things. Okay, well, every, so, just to verify, everything here will need a public hearing, correct? All of the ordinance.
All of the discussion that are listed under discussion items now.
Yes.
On this agenda have not had a public hearing.
Right.
The four, oh, sorry. Bullets above it have had the public hearing. They just need to be finalized at A and O?
Yes. Okay, so can you please schedule a public hearing? I, I don't anticipate a deep discussion being needed on any of the pieces that are now on our agenda under discussion, so.
So we can't schedule a public hearing for this month?
No, I know that.
Okay.
Can you schedule it for October?
Discussion items. For October, public hearings. September, discussion. Okay. So just to be clear, what we are putting for discussion in September and public hearing in October. And if it's okay, I'll just zero emissions, cannabis, social equity, vacancies in appointed office, cultural crossroads, meeting article three, hybrid meeting, disclosure notifications, sorry, farming disclosure notifications, wetlands protection, Human Rights Commission, Ways and Means, remove temporarily and Part Three general legislation.
So the Part Three general legislation, if you, that, that is just a discussion. If you could actually keep that on our agenda for October, that would be great, but not, that, that doesn't need it. Yeah.
So discussion only. And discussion in October. No public hearing.
Just have a big dance party, really.
In October.
That's just what we need to.
Okay, so discussion for October.
Yes. Basically.
Discussion for October and September for the general, Part Three general legislation.
I'm sorry, I was thinking about a dance party.
I know you. And I don't want to because I just want to go home. Okay.
And, yeah.
Code Part Three, general legislation, discussion in September and October, no October public hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
And in fact, if you could just, for the time being, anticipate keeping that as a discussion item for the next few months until I ask you to take it off, that would be great.
Could we write that, like, this chapter's attached, keep on agenda?
Until.
Further notice.
You move. Okay. Like, all right, cool.
Thank you.
Perfect. I never turned this on, so Tammy's going to have to go off now.
Okay. All right, this one.
Cover all of A and O?
Yeah.
And.
Okay. Um, community relations, so, uh, we're gonna get rid of the first two discussion items, inviting other committees, commissions and boards. We're still developing the list of ones that we want to.
Are we removing them entirely?
Um, how about we temporary, just for, what's the difference between, like, setting it aside for a while?
So if you're going to set it aside for a while.
Yeah.
Maybe we remove it in its entirety and you resubmit it when you're ready.
Okay, great.
So the first two bullets.
Yep.
Remove entirely.
Yep.
Move to be re-submitted in future.
Okay. Um, also remove the arts and culture activities.
Remove, will be resubmitted.
Um, and then I don't see on it, but, but we did talk about that this next meeting will be a joint meeting with school committee engagement.
So I think the last bullet, collaboration of potential joint community engagement. I think that was a summary of that because we really didn't know what to say.
Okay.
So, um, joint meeting with school committee, community relations, whatever they are.
Yeah.
Okay.
To discuss.
I do have some concerns on that. Oh. Uh, few points. The most important one is that there's an election coming up and it just, it feels like it could be political because that committee is made up of three people and two of them are running for office. So that concerns me, just as a thought. It might be better to postpone it until after November election, just to avoid any kind of, because we, have we ever done this before? With the school committee?
Um. Not that I remember. But possibly at some point in the future, there, there may have been. So when Community Relations was first formed, not first formed, formed back in the early part of the charter.
Right.
It used to be Community Relations and Education.
Right.
Because at one point, um, one of the counselors felt like it was important to have a monthly meeting, not a council meeting, that someone from the schools came because at the time there were issues. And they wanted to have communication. I don't remember exactly what the issue was. So it wasn't a joint meeting, but there was a representative that came to most of the meetings to update a subcommittee. That's, and then eventually it worked out the issues.
Right.
And they removed it, removed the education piece.
I got to say about that. I understand your concern. I'm like going through the counselors who will be there and who are up for reelection as well, so. I know one of the items that they're introduced, interested in talking about is just an MOU of, of, like, how do we work together?
Between the council and the school.
Or at least, at least between, like, engagement committee, public.
I mean, I guess that was my, the other part of this question is, especially in the charter, the school committee has really separate, different powers, which we try and keep separate from the city council. And usually when we do either a joint committee or an ad hoc committee, it's to solve a specific issue. Or, so I'm just, I like, it's just a little confusing to me and I worry about when it's so generic, like, maybe it's the issue communication, I'm just confused.
It is, it's communication.
Um, because again, I'm worried again, the difference between substantive and performative.
Right.
In an election. So I just worry about mixing the council, getting the council right now. And I mean, it could be serious, but it just, that, those are my concerns. I mean, we can go that way, it just makes me a little nervous.
Yeah, I mean, there have been discussions between myself and the committee chair for the last couple of months because I think we all came out of all of these bruising fights and it's just not in the best interest of the city for us to continue to operate this way of.
Yeah, I just say there's various opinions on it. So it feels a little bit like perhaps the current leadership didn't like one committee, Ways and Means, and they're shopping for another one. I mean, I'm just saying there's a lot of political ramifications and I, I personally don't like it in an election cycle. That's all. I don't know that it'll be genuine discussion right in the middle of an election.
Is there, is there a specific, right, like, the focus is how we work together? Are there specific, like, sub-agenda, right? Are there, like, sub, sub-agenda topics? Like, how will that meeting be facilitated? And what's the thinking about that? Cause I think that that would bring to the substance of it.
So when the joint meeting is posted. So you. You have three agenda items here for the September fifth meeting.
Right.
The portion of the meeting that will be joint. It won't be all of the meeting because you're only gonna be discussing. You're not, you're not discussing with them the possible amendments to the ordinance on precinct meetings.
Right.
And you're not discussing with them rewriting of what the community relations will be. So whatever portion will be a joint meeting, much like EDC's joint meeting with the planning board. Is only about these specific items, there will have to be those specific items that you're going to discuss posted. And again, like we say all the time, that we just love to say that nobody loves to hear, not on the agenda, you don't discuss it.
And, and. We're ironing those out because vacation, so people.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, in order for that to be a fruitful conversation, like, I think our conversations. Are, are actually largely fruitful because we're talking about specific motions, right? Specific things, I mean, they may be annoying and long and drawn out, but we're actually talking about a thing as opposed to, how are we together, right?
Right.
And, and I, and I hear your concern and I think that it's far less likely to be performative and actually far more likely to be effective. If there's like proposals or questions that we're looking for answers to, and if that's the case. Then I mean, I think Greenfield is just odd that our, that our election cycles are every four years. I mean, you look at state senators, state rep, oh, state, you know.
Two years.
Right, most places are two years, so.
Our election cycle is every two.
Well, what I mean is our term, our terms.
Okay.
Our terms are four years, so it doesn't feel like we're always running for reelection, but in most places with two-year terms, people. I mean, elections are a constant question, like, and so politics is, for better or worse, slightly performative. So like, the idea that we wouldn't do something during an election cycle is just because we have strange terms here, like. I, I would hope that it would be substantive, and if the conversation isn't substantive, then like, that shows poorly on the people who are part of the conversation.
But your point about having a specific item to discuss, I think is really well taken, like, that, that seems to be the key to avoiding what you're concerned about, you know, is having something. That is nice, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's a bad idea, I, I, I think, again, it's just that, the characters that are all involved here. We're all involved in the budget debates, I don't wanna get into the, it's just. I feel like it's opening up on the scary can of worms, that if it was, not that I don't wanna have the discussion, but it just. It really feels political doing it right now.
Who are the people?
Um, Elizabeth Denise, Mel Goodwin and Stacy Sexton, so two of them. Of the three members of that committee are currently running an election campaign.
Right, and then that's. But we've been talking about this since like June.
And I don't think that like Laura is, I don't think that the intent here is still, like.
We'll let the public decide, I'm just expressing my dissent, that's all, I, I mean, it sounds like it's gonna go forward, I just want to know. And state that for the public too. The council wants to get involved in that, that's the way council leadership wants to go.
But, but I hear your points about making sure it's very specific and I will push them for more specific because they reached out to us and said, we. I mean, we.
I don't like it because it's a nebulous thing, this community relations, everybody knows that's not my favorite to be in with.
Right.
Because when we have the Board of Assessors, a joint meeting, we're talking about specific issues that have specific expertise related to something we're gonna vote on. And that generally is the pattern that follows for EDC, all of those things. Or if there was an ordinance, it would be a very specific ordinance that we're voting on, so that's why I just feel like it's a, a can of worms that could be open, but. Uh, I just really would prefer it if it were, it seems like it'd be better for the council if it were after an election.
So, this MOU that you were describing, or, you know, understanding degree, is that something that is, is there a draft of that?
I, I just got like literally a text earlier today, um, so they're working on a rough MOU.
Is there any harm in holding the sock until October, so like that kinda stuff is.
An MOU for what? I don't know any MOUs.
It's not really an MOU, it's not a contract, but like a, a statement of understanding, basically about what the meetings, if they're gonna be joint meetings, would be about, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's how, how we work together and.
Like a civility code or a, I'm confused.
Yeah.
And why, I mean, again, I mean, a joint committee, cause like counselors and everyone has a phone, they have email, they can talk to each other. So again, I'm asking, we're having a specific joint committee meeting feels pretty.
Well, we're trying to also avoid issues of open meeting and like, because. It seemed to make sense for community relations because we're talking about how the council is working with school committee. They propose, cause we also have had discussions about how the Ways and Means works with, and this was. One of those proposals by the folks from the school committee.
I think that we might, there might be a Venn diagram between what John and I are thinking right now. I'm honestly not that concerned about the election piece and I hear, I hear your concern about that, I'm more concerned about the effectiveness piece. We don't know who we're gonna be in relationship with after November. And I don't know that we can, I mean, like, this is a, there are seven people running for three seats, I don't know that we can form agreements. If we don't know who we're gonna be in relationship with, like, I don't know, but that then.
They don't understand the harm in having a conversation because. Community relations, it's a lot of what we do is gathering like what is public opinion on various things. And I think us coming from our two perspectives on.
Do you feel like there's a, do you feel like there's a reason effectively to have the conversation now as opposed to. Starting in December, like, is there a reason, a substantive reason to happen now? Cause I trust you, like, I trust that you are not politically motivated in this, I trust you, so if there's, is there a substantive reason to do it now?
I think they're, they're available, we're available, um, we could push it up. And then we're gonna get into budget season and then it starts to get heated, so I think the idea is how do we.
Yeah, but like, we don't, I, I don't know, I thought your point was really good, like, wouldn't it be better, even if it's this exact same people? But it won't be the exact.
It could be.
But it could be, but I mean, that, that might be a more effective, even in January, to say, we're gonna start new. Because if it's all different people, it's very contentious, I mean, you may not feel it, but it's extremely contentious.
Oh, I, I mean.
So, I mean, I'm just saying, I, I.
No, I know, I.
It is, it is, it could, it definitely could.
I've had a lot of one-on-ones.
Could be perceived as the council entering into, we, we've had so much already perceived council. Overreach, overstretch, whatever you wanna call it, uh, from the Ways and Means, that's some of what I've heard, and so. I don't know, I, I'm not, I just don't know how productive that would be at this moment.
It also seems like it's tied into the purpose of community relations too, like, this is, you know, we want community relations to be an effective committee. I mean, I think you chairing it is part of, part of that.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I firmly, I know that's your goal, doing this, and I think it would if we were talking to the school committee. More in general, regardless of who's on it, that's gonna be better than not doing it. But I also wonder, you know, the, the item right before that about rewriting the definition of CRE, you know, what it oversees, maybe we decide. The CR, the Community Relations Committee is gonna be interacting with committees like this and establishing rules, and we get that duck out of the row. You know, in October, you know, or September, and then look at this, you know, the meeting in November will be after the election, right? And so if we put this on.
Oh, that's true too.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so like, if we look at that piece, maybe that's a way to kinda. Do it in different steps, we'll still do, and although I hear what you're saying about like them being available now. And like, hey, you know, the, you know, the urgency of now is obviously a thing too, like, if folks are ready to talk, like. That's not always the case, you know, and that, I don't know, it's, um, but getting that piece about what is CRE's. Job, you know, buttoned up might be helpful too, and then on the other, you know, so that's, maybe that's the step to take now, and then in October. If we have it, you know, buttoned up, we can look at doing this in November, you know, and say, I don't know. Cause I, I hear your concerns and I don't wanna like throw fuel on the fire of a contentious election cycle. I don't, I think Catherine's right, that it will be moderated in a way that it's gonna be fine. But I also, I can't predict how people react, you know, like, it's not something I can guarantee is gonna happen. Cause we remove the definition of CRE or C, Community Relations from this month, right, that's what we're gonna end again. Uh, is that because you don't feel like that's.
We, we've looked at it and we've discussed it and we felt like it, it captures what.
Okay, so we're already good there, that's not, that's a moot point, but I'm sorry.
Could there be an agenda item in a full city council meeting where you share that? Because I haven't heard that, like, I'm, it sounds like there's a lot of more clarity in the committee than there has been in the past. And that would be great for the whole council to hear. Like, and. I, I, I trust your, but.
I mean, it's not any different than it's been before, it's happened, I'm not sure.
Catherine, yes.
So, two things, did you say you wanted to remove the rewriting of the definition?
Um.
Because I didn't hear that. I thought what was left on the agenda was possible amendment to the ordinance for precinct meeting.
Right.
Possible rewriting of definition of what CRC oversees. And collaboration and potential joint community engagement. But if I'm wrong, that's fine, please clarify.
Yeah, just wanted to postpone that, uh.
Postpone the rewriting?
Yep.
Remove to be resubmitted in the future?
Yep.
Okay. Um. So. If a discussion was added to a council agenda. Um. It might be good to have something in writing to give background information. Because we have the list on the agenda, what is going to be discussed. So, that's one thing, and if you're going to put it in writing. What has been thought of and teased out and suggested and what you were looking to propose.
Right.
Would it need to be an agenda item because you've got it all written down right here?
But I think what I'm hearing from these counselors is to. Axe it completely, so.
Axe looking.
The, the.
Joint, joint meeting, yeah.
Unless you feel like there's a real reason to do it before November, like, I imagine if it's really important, which it is really important, we could do it in November. But if, like.
Or could, this would not violate open meeting law. If you and the chair communicated together to sort of came up with, to come up with. Um, what you both think these subcommittees could do. And that might take a little bit of time.
Yeah.
Possibly to put you out until after the election. Which then you will know theoretically, who will be on the committee next year. Um, so it's sort of, in my brain. Gets what Counsel Goleb is talking about, like a plan in place to know what you're gonna be doing, to propose to someone. And takes into account Counsel Bottomley's objection to the discussion during election time. It's just a thought, I don't have a.
Yeah, I guess I'm. I see us as starting a conversation and I don't see this as being as involved or, or. Because that's what we do on community relations, you know, it's not always things that end up with. An immediate outcome like on other committees.
Mm-hmm, so it's not like this body that is school committee right now would be making any decision on behalf of the next body right there. So it's an exploration.
Yeah.
I trust, I've not seen it facilitated well, so if you wanted to do it, I would just not want, like, this. And when I heard MOU, like, the MO, there cannot be a memorandum of understanding between the current body and whatever future. The current school committee body and the future body, if, if it's exploration and conversation, I don't see why not have exploration.
I mean, the fact that we've got, you know, three people on that and two of them, you know, maybe, I mean, two of them are vying for the same seats, right? And so that at least creates, you know, for worry about politics, right, you got two people that are not.
And that's only.
Running things, you know?
That's only school committee because CRE has people that are also on the ballot for council.
Right, so both Melody and Elizabeth will have a voice if, you know, we do it this month. And that makes me feel less concerned about the political aspect of it, you know, cause I, I'm confident they both can articulate.
I'm just concerned how much is structural and how much is personal.
What do you mean by that, John?
Well, how much of the conflict that's just happened is personal?
Oh, I see.
Or how much is structural, because I love the idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Coming up with structural ideas to make things better, to help us communicate better. It's just really hard to do that when things get extremely heated.
Oh, no doubt.
And especially we've got count, this will be, we already know they're talking about specific councils and specific school committee members. So it's just, I don't, it, with through the heat, if you think you, there's a way to make that productive. When people are running for elections, uh, I, I just really concerned about that.
Yeah, I mean, trying to sidestep some of that, I'm happy to hold off, you know, we. It took two months to come up with a date that worked with everybody, so.
I think I would say this is information you ultimately decide as the chair, whether you do it.
I trust that you can handle if it gets contentious, like I do, you know, and I'm not worried about you letting people grandstand, you know?
Maybe we will.
It's just for fun.
Yeah.
Get two chapters.
I, I appreciate. Yeah. As personal and unproductive as possible.
No.
You got a special agenda.
No.
Uh, Levensons, if those can get on.
So, do we want to leave it as you will let us know?
Yes, I will give you some more parameters, um. I mean, thankfully, we've been a little bit preoccupied with a few other items, so I have not spent any time on this.
That's entirely fair.
Thank you.
So I'm just saying Laura will email.
Yes.
Okay.
So that goes to Ways and Means.
Uh, and I'm thinking on this one, invite Paul Newell.
Yeah.
And maybe ask him or relevant DPW personnel, cause I don't know who, if he would want to be there if there's.
Paul Newell and or Devigny?
Yeah. Cause I don't know if they, I mean, he's probably fine, but I don't know if he wants someone else or an engineer there that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
You're gonna be expensive.
Dear God.
I know.
Well, the building is. It'll look, uh, I don't even remember when it went in, um, nineties? Late nineties?
It doesn't look day over, nineteen ninety-five.
Right. Um, but anyways.
And I'm gonna keep asking how this dovetails with the recycling grant that was supposed to fix some of the transfer station.
That's a good question.
And he's also heard there's rats.
So, and it's cats.
I've heard that there's been a German shepherd sizes, the pictures that Mary was showing us.
She had a really disgusting kids, a colony of feral cats, and the mayor did not even.
They're there.
I mean.
I thought it was a good idea.
You know, there are the places that like have the border collies, like doing the geese, so I didn't think that was, that'd be crazy.
There have been rats there forever.
And, but if there were cats.
Then you'd have cats and rats.
So you want City of Greenfield cats?
I kinda do, yes.
Those would have to be some big cats.
And I'm sorry.
Okay, digress.
So that's the only thing on Ways and Means.
Yeah, okay.
Now, you got lucky. And nothing from the city clerk?
Nah, nothing's going.
Okay, um, we have our special meeting, um, on Wednesday.
Oh.
Tomorrow, that's fully remote.
Yes.
Did you happen to see, I sent you guys some like draft. And not instructions, but this is how the virtual meetings kind of play out.
Yes, I did see.
Okay.
I've not looked at it yet. Where I make dinner and.
Yeah.
It.
Okay, I will check.
It's modified on when we went virtual in twenty twenty.
Okay.
Um, like, how do you, and do you. Um, like, how do you enter your name for, to speak? Because you can't do raise hand because you can't tell who was first.
Oh, right.
So it's just some, some light, this is how it's going down, folks.
This protocol, I don't think they were replaced by the time that I joined.
When did you join?
I was June 2022.
Yeah, we, we kind of all just knew what we were doing by then.
Yeah. Yeah, and it was only subcommittee online.
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Um, so draft.
Okay.
Um, my question was, so Senator, Senator Commerford is on there.
Yes.
Before motions orders and resolutions. Do you want to have the council waive the rules or procedure so that Senator Commerford goes as soon as they get there?
Yes.
Okay, waive rules or procedure.
Which could be on time and could be late.
Well, again, if you waive the rules.
Yeah, I know.
In the beginning, then whenever they come in, you finish up the conversation you're having and then you go.
Yep.
And you're up.
No, that's exactly right.
Any amendments to what goes where or?
This is all look right. Is there anything from A and O that is, should be on here that is not?
Thank you for asking. I need a moment. Um.
Thought you would be able to move anything that's.
Well, the.
It's all just good.
Yeah, the, um, sorry, I talked to the, um, the the few things that are under motions, zero, zero, eight and zero, ten.
Last two?
Yeah.
Seven?
Those may be ready.
Okay.
Those are the only ones that may be ready, besides the appointments, which I believe are already.
So will you let us know after your meeting on the 10th? Because there's not a lot of turnaround time.
Yeah. Is it okay if we just write it on the paper that has the the scorekeeping during the meeting?
That's fine, as long as we know that's where it's going to be.
Well, can you help me remember that Rachel typically is our secretary?
Okay.
That we need to write down, need to write down on that piece of paper whether those pieces go forward or not.
Write down whether. Hopefully I don't use this up right now and next week.
Yeah. And if I forget, or if we remember the next morning, then.
Let's send ourselves, it's one of those emails that show when you want to show up.
You can do that?
Yeah, right. Just do the, make the late send or whatever they want.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Be very vague.
Just clear enough to know what you're talking about.
Yeah. Is Counselor Gordon's not going to be at the meeting, vote on her?
No, no, I think she is. I just, she's not here right now.
I see.
So she's just.
I'll just send it to you and me so we don't have any hold of meeting.
Yep.
I think that's.
That's all I'm thinking. Sounds good. So our agenda from A and O will like, will be, I don't know that it'll be, would be very contentious, but it, what's that?
Scroll?
Yeah, exactly. And I agree.
And again, that's, it's gonna be more fun if it scrolls.
Set a proposal.
You bring it out. It's like.
Just a little joy.
Hear ye, hear ye. Okay, so I am looking at entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
I am.
Rate is six fifty-seven and I'm calling to close the chairs.
We meet on.
Thank you all for being here.